I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick is absent with notice. Zarzaki present. Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Aquinto is absent with notice. Ms. Infante?
Here.
And Mr. Dreyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Is this microphone working, Mr. Nelson? Are these working? They don't sound like...
Yeah.
Okay. They're not? I don't... Okay, there we go.
There they go.
Thank you. Everybody receive copy of the agenda? I make motion when you approve the agenda. Support by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Call to the public. Seeing there is none, we'll move on. Clarifications not needed. Correspondence? Ms. Byrd, any? I didn't receive any. There's no public hearing tonight. Reports from committees. Ms. Chick is absent, so there's no Board of Trustees report. We'll go to Mr. Kuzno for his EBA report.
We did not meet since our last meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Byrd, any staff report?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lippens, planning consultant report?
Yeah, in addition to agenda items this evening, I'll just provide the update that the township did today host a question and answer session on the North Village RFP process. It was a good session. Good discussion was had. We received several questions. I will be typing up that discussion to include as an informative item on the township's webpage. But we are excited about the North Village RFP process. Any interested respondents have an additional month to form their teams and get preliminary questions done. Township will take questions on the RFP until March 21st. We will issue responses to those questions by March 28th. And then the final deadline for submittal, I believe, is May 19th, but I might not be remembering that correctly right now. If you give me a second, I will check.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience. It's May 16th is the deadline.
Very good. Mr. Kuzno, question?
Yeah, Mr. Lippens just wanted to... What... How many attendees were in this meeting representing different developers?
There were only three attendees at the meeting today, but all suggested that they were there representing some larger interests and potentially some other partners. And, you know, one of them mentioned specifically that they had come based on the township's ad in the Sunday Free Press, which cast a wide net. So some of the advertising we're doing is certainly being well-received. And I'd definitely say it's not... Or it's fairly typical to have a low draw on a Q&amp;A session, but still receive a number of responses and a number of questions. So we hope to receive more questions in the next month. And one of the reasons why we set the deadline so far out was to give time for the word to spread.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll go on to Parks and Recs. Mr. Aquinto's absent. Downtown Planning Group report, Ms. Infante?
Has not met.
Thank you. Item 10, unfinished business. We'll go to item A, the North Field Preserve Site Plan Extension. Mr. Lippens?
Yeah, good evening. The township has... Is in receipt of an application for a site plan extension on a site known as North Field Preserves. In the packet, we've included a letter that has some findings and a recommendation. Those findings are based around the preliminary site plan approval, which was granted in February of 2008. A previous site plan extension that was granted on January 7th of 2015. And the current request for an extension of the site plan. The preliminary site plan. I can address questions if needed, but I'd like to skip to the recommendation noting that we are recommending that Planning Commission grant a 180-day extension of the preliminary site plan for the North Field Preserves condominiums, subject to the following conditions. One, that the applicant is required to work with the township attorney and the zoning board of appeals to determine the validity of prior variances and acquire new variances for any that have expired. Two, that the applicant is required to obtain all necessary county and state engineering approvals and submit documentation of these approvals with the final site plan. Three, that the applicant is required to submit a final site plan and application to the township within 180 days. And four, that the applicant is required to pay all township fees generated by the review and consideration of North Field Preserve condominiums. And that's the summary of our recommendation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. I guess my perspective on this is that I don't see harm in granting an extension. I know Mr. Lippens is working diligently with the applicant. That's my comment. I do have a motion. I make a motion that we go with the recommendation of McKenna's report with the... With the conditions just mentioned. Is there support?
I will support for discussion.
Thank you. So we have a motion with support. Is there questions, comments on the motion? Ms. Infante? No? Mr. Dreyer?
Given that this has been going on for 10 years, it looks like, and the current problems seem to be significant, in that they can't get a developer, engineering problems, et cetera, doesn't look to me on face value that anything's going to happen in the next 180 days. Is there, you know, anything negative in putting stringent, more stringent conditions on them now, which they are unlikely to be able to meet? Is there anything negative in continually kicking his can down the road until such time as they are in a position that they can move forward, whether it be two, five, or however long?
Mr. Lippens, you care to comment?
I would take that question and make a note of it if further discussion would be having on this subject.
Okay. Ms. Infante?
I was wondering, Mr. Lippens, seeing as this is a 2006 set ordinance, have we had any substantial changes made that you can think of that perhaps would... And represent a particular problem or hurdle for this applicant? I mean, have there been any substantial township changes since 2006?
Mr. Lippens?
I would just say that the recommendation we've made this evening is... And the findings we've presented are our attempt to answer the question you posed for tonight's discussion.
Mr. Zarzaki?
As far as the 180 days, I believe that would be adequate if they are really going to go ahead with this. I guess my biggest concern is the variances that were granted even 10 years ago. They made a statement that township planner stated at that time that any determination of the validity of the variances could be determined later. And I don't believe we want to wait or grant acceptance to anything if we're going to determine at a later date if the variances were even correct. So I guess the strongest one we need to look at if we're going to grant 180 days is the request for number... Or recommendation number one from our planner, that this go back to zoning and zoning take a very careful look at what they present to make sure that it meets our zoning requirements, not that we're going to determine at a later date. They have to be determined if they're going to get grant variances, those variances are going to stand as part of our legal document, and that's going to be it. We can't be half-ass making, you know, okay, we'll grant you a variance and maybe we'll figure out later if we did it right.
Right. And I... My comment to that is that, I mean, the original site plan, 2008, at that time did go through the zoning board of appeals. We currently have the township attorney reviewing it with the zoning board of appeals to determine that. So I guess I'm not... I guess I don't really quite understand what direction I guess you're posing, then, Mr. Zarzaki?
Well, no, I agree with the four recommendations. I'm just saying, I think the first recommendation for, you know, going back to zoning is the most important to start with. And if zoning's not going to approve this, then it's not going to go any further until it's been done correctly.
Correct.
Now, 180 days, you know, six months should be adequate if they're really, you know, committed to this project. They've had it on their desk for 10 years. And, yeah, they probably put it in a cubbyhole somewhere and they didn't look at it for the last eight or nine, and now they're looking at it. But if they're really, you know, adamant they're going to do that this time, then I believe 180 days would work. I mean, that's not...
Okay.
Not an insignificant amount of time for them, especially since they already have plans and a concept and everything ready to work on. They're not coming from scratch. So...
Right.
In my opinion, I would agree with the proposal to grant them the 180 days and let it take its course.
Thank you. And I think also to comment with... Along with your comment, number two is pretty specific, that they obtain all necessary county, state, and engineering approvals. So that's going to pretty much cover it. Mr. Kuzno, do you have a question? Comment?
No. I think that they got their work cut out for them if they're going to do this. That's all.
Right.
All of those things are going to take time, and like I said, they've had plenty of time to do something up to this point, so...
Okay. So at this...
This question is... I'm sorry. One question would be if they don't perform in 180 days, the extension would give them... What's going to happen then? They're going to file for another one, or they're going to drop it?
Possibly. Mr. Lippens, can you answer that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Understood. So at this time, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Zarzaki, can you do a roll call vote?
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Ms. Chick's absent. Zarzaki, yes. Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Aquinto is absent. Ms. Infante?
Yes.
And Mr. Dreyer?
Yes.
Approved by a quorum of five.
Thank you. Moving on, item 10B, further discussion of the 2018 zoning ordinance schedule, the urgent, minor, and major amendments. Mr. Lippens, please.
All right. At last... At the last meeting, we had some discussion about putting the... Organizing and providing a little more information about a schedule for the zoning amendment process, which I was defining as urgent, minor, and major, really to group them into three categories. I put a disclaimer on this letter that I don't mean to convey any subjective value or priority level based on the terms urgent, major, and minor. Maybe I should have just said first, second, and third. I'm realizing that now. But for what it's worth, this is how we started talking about them. So the other... There's two things that you should note in this memo. To help guide all the Planning Commission, this process, I've included both the section number for the specific amendment review, the titles of the sections in the ordinance that we'll look at, and then the issue that we've identified with these specific ordinance items. And then in the final column, a proposed Planning Commission meeting schedule. So what this is intended to do is at each Planning Commission, I'll bring forward a memo that has that section as well as the proposed amendment. And that way, we can have concise conversations, but also keep us on schedule. When we've completed the first section, the urgent amendment section, our goal would be to make a recommendation on all of those amendments to the board at one time. Similarly, when we complete the minor amendments, we'll bring those to the board at one time. And then the thing I should say about the minor amendments is that we'll also follow the complete technical review of the document. So we will likely identify additional minor amendments that we'll want to bring forward in that second process. And then major amendments, which kind of involve pretty substantial overhauls to the ordinance. And most of these issues are identified in this because they might be things that are also interrelated, so we'll have to work through a little bit... A little bit more detail for this group. For the purpose of this evening, I'd like to at least walk you through the urgent amendments because that's our immediate schedule. The first... The first thing we want to look at is 3629, which is in definitions, to look at some specific issues. One, adding definition for what equipment services mean, because there's been some discrepancy in how equipment services are defined as uses across districts. And then the second one is there's been some confusion on how setback and yards are defined, specifically for waterfront properties. So these are two definitions we'd like to look at in our next meeting on 37. 321, we'd like to look at temporary specialty stores. And specifically, the ordinance has some regulations, like for Christmas sales, but it doesn't include anything for Halloween or for firework sales. And we know people do like to do firework sales, and that's happened in the township in the past. So we'd like to revise the ordinance to include provisions to do that as a... In the permit process. On 44, there are a few sections in the ordinance that have somewhat conflicting setback requirements. So we'd like to look at all of these sections and make sure that ambiguity between how setbacks and yard setbacks are measured within these sections is resolved, so that they're all consistent with each other. And then finally, for urgent amendments, on 418, there's a little bit of ambiguity in how building encroachments or overhangs are defined in terms of how setbacks are applied there. So we'd like to look at that ambiguity on that date. So I'll pause there. I don't know if you'd like me to walk you through the whole memo tonight, or if that's a good overview, or if there are any questions.
Yeah, I think that's a... For me, that's a good overview. I was more looking... I looked at the whole plan, you know, urgent, minor, and major, and knowing that any actual discussion's going to start next month. But I did have... I looked at it two different ways. At first, I thought this may take more time than we're allotting for, but then in reality, after looking at some of those sections that were quoted for these items under urgent, now I'm thinking that we're actually maybe taking baby steps. I think we could possibly get more per week than what you actually have listed, but it's at... You know, I understand there's the research and the... The documentation and in your part. So am I wrong in thinking that this is a little light on the schedule? Like possibly we could tackle maybe more of these at one meeting? What is your thought on that?
No, I don't... I don't think you're wrong. Partly, the goal in stretching it out is that Planning Commission has other business that might come up. So what I wanted to do was make sure that we had a plan for a working schedule to, you know, keep our meetings, you know, fairly busy and keep the discussion going, as well as allow time for any other business as it arises. You know, I'd say we can... We could certainly combine stuff. But I know there were... It was kind of two approaches that I was thinking. One might be to make one of our meetings every month dedicated to zoning work and try to consolidate regular Planning Commission business to the other meeting. But then I think I went with this idea, which was just to schedule a little bit every time to keep us working.
Right. I think that... I mean, in my opinion, excuse me though, in my opinion, I think that's a better way because our regular business has been light at times, was last year. So I think spreading it each week would... Or each... Two times a month would be... Would be better. So I agree with that.
And I know during this time, especially for the first three months, we're also going to be conducting the technical review of the ordinance. So we can probably substantiate our discussions with some feedback to Planning Commission as that technical review happens. But that's, you know, really what it's going to do is take us some staff time to do that technical review, generate that memo. So once we get through these first two months, and then really, I've got some scheduling into May with some agenda items, sometime we're going to hit with a whole bunch more agenda items, so we might... We might pick up the pace. Of course, we can change this. But, you know, one of my main objectives for this schedule was really to make sure that we had a working schedule for the next three months.
Understood. My only other thing, Mr. Lippens, was that, you know, we... And you touched upon it on your description, but the major amendment... When we do get through the urgent and minor amendments, we have major amendments. At that time, we don't really have a timeframe. And these are larger items, which may take more discussion time, maybe research time. But what is your thought? When we get to that point, are we just going to pick them from the list top to bottom? Or what is... Can you expand on that?
I guess I'm not tied to anything. Based on the schedule, which we... I think I went over the overall schedule at the last meeting.
Right.
Maybe I should have included that in your packet as well. But I have that here. Let me pull it up.
Okay, you're speaking from our prior meeting on the second?
Correct.
Or it was... Your... The meeting was the seventh, but your... Your date on your memo was the second?
Oh, I apologize. Yeah.
Okay.
The seventh.
Yeah, I did... I did look at that. I have that.
Yeah, the meeting was the seventh. So... Essentially, that third through seventh is working through the technical review items. And I think what we'll do is we'll tackle the minor amendments first. And while Planning Commission works to tackle those minor amendments, I've got two listed in May, what I'll be doing with my staff is reviewing the entire ordinance. So I think that likely the way this will happen is, you know, we'll continue to work through minor amendments, you know, at least through May. Maybe that takes us into June. But what we'd like to do is send those minor amendments off, and preferably, at that time, I will have a markup of the entire ordinance for Planning Commission to look at. And Planning Commission is going to have to make the decision about how we work through the entire ordinance, if we want to, you know, walk through the markup one by one and then get consensus, or if we ask Planning Commission to review that... All of those changes at once and come forward and only address specific questions. I know it can be a process to work through a lot of amendments at once. So we'll have to decide the best approach for Planning Commission in order to do that.
Okay.
Ideally, what we'll do is, you know, have that whole book, and I'll do a presentation on all the amendments, the approach. They'll all be aligned with the items that we've addressed in the technical review. And ideally, what we'll do is answer questions on specific items from Planning Commission and then make a recommendation to proceed. But what we would like to do is move into the approval process by the 10th month, so we can go through the administrative, public hearings, and the board review.
Correct.
So we can get this done this year. Does that make sense?
Yes. It does to me. And I understand there's a lot of work in your end to go through all the ordinance and verify everything and make any possible changes. So I understand, and I... It's fine with me. Is there any other questions or comments on the commissioners about the process? No? Okay. No, Mr. Kuzno?
I just wanted to verify. So from your February 2nd memo, it says tentative project schedule. You say 7th, 8th, 9th. Those are months? Is that what that's supposed to mean?
Yes.
Okay. And that's like... So that would be the same as saying January through March and... Or not? Is it like... Is it from the month where we start the actual process?
Um...
Are we saying the 1st through 3rd? Does that mean January through March? Or does that mean from March through June, when... Because we're starting in March, basically?
I think that technically, the first month is February here, because we really started this month.
All right. So it's not... It's not specific months. It's from when we start the process, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? I did have one other comment, Mr. Lippens, is that from the February 2nd outline under the technical review, the administrative procedures and standards, I kind... I was kind of looking to see that... How that flowed into the latest memo that we just received in this packet. And am I... And am I correct in saying those, those items fall under the major amendments, under the site plan review? Reason I'm asking is, the end of last year, we started to look at our plan, plan review process, and that seemed to be one of the higher goals of the board of trustees for the planning commission to look at. And I don't want to more or less put that off to the end of this whole review, since it was something that we started late last year, and it's something that the board of trustees requested that we look into. So is, can you kind of give me an idea on that?
Yeah. I had included specifically section 36864(c)(2) site plan approval and change of use, which is one of the things that we required, what we talked about in detail. And this is in the current memo in your packet today, under (c) major amendments. And also, section 36383, which is the site plan review, under the, the major amendments process. And my rationale for this is that I feel like the technical review will likely reveal additional procedural changes that we want to make that didn't come out of the first conversation. You know, one example of that is, you know, recently, we've been talking about private roads, the natural features procedures has come up, there are procedural items in the site condominium standards, procedural items in the PUD standards, there's procedural items in the open space development option. And the way all of these different sections relate to each other are a part of that one issue, which is advancing the site development process. So my thought was, to be thorough, we wanted to at least do the technical review before we advanced those. When the technical review's done, if planning commission would like to advance that part, I could certainly see a justification to do that. But for now, I, I do consider that one of the larger things we want to look at the ordinance for, and I'm certainly open to advancing the schedule as, as we can, as things go. But I do expect we'll learn a little bit as we go through the technical review process.
Right. I didn't want to appear to the board of trustees that we are not looking into that topic, and I agree with you. A lot of those things will tie into how the process overall is handled, but when we do get to that point, if we can bump up some kind of process that we could forward to them, since they requested that specifically, would be great. This is my opinion.
Making a note of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? Seeing, I mean, we've already made motion previously, Mr. Lippens, that we proceed with this, so I, I don't think we need any action on this tonight. I mean, we see your outline, we gave you some feedback. I think we're all anxious to, to start doing it, so.
I agree. I mean, this is a working session. We'll have, we'll be in working session on this item for, for the entire year, and so I think we'll have a lot of discussions that don't necessarily require specific action.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, we're ready.
[laughing]
Okay. Anything, anything else on item B? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Lippens. We have no new business tonight. We'll go to approval of meeting, meeting minutes from February 7th. Everyone receive that? I make motion, we approve the minutes of February 7th and dispense with reading.
Second.
Support by Mr. Kuzno. Any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Final call to the public, seeing none. Seeing there's no public, we'll move on. Comments from the commissioners, we'll start with Mr. Kuzno.
None tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki?
None additional at this time.
Mr. Dwyer?
I have nothing.
Ms. Infante?
None, thank you.
Nor do I, but I guess one comment is, is that, Mr. Lippens, if we do see something that strikes us that, in that process, I'm kind of questioning, back to the item that we had, the proper thing would be for a commissioner to possibly forward you an email stating, what about this? And you could possibly reflect on that. I mean, what would be the proper procedure without notifying the entire commission?
So that is a very good question. I guess my suggestion would be, you know, planning commissioners can communicate to me, I'm your planner, and it's certainly always appropriate to a copy or chair, and I can address any questions to you specifically. And certainly, any ideas you have about the zoning ordinance, anything you come across during this process, I am very happy to hear. And what I'll do is I'll, I will incorporate those comments and ideas into the next available planning commission agenda, so that I can bring it to the entire commission's.
Thank you. Yeah, and that was my, my point. I mean, commissioners should feel free if they see something. We would like this to be, I would like it to be as efficient as possible, but yet, beware that items for discussion need to be done at a public hearing or a public meeting. So, but, but don't shy away from getting with Mr. Lippens regarding anything through the process. So I think that'll help everybody. Thank you. So I'll announce the next meeting being March 7th, 2018. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
Motion by Mr. Kuzno, I'll support that motion. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much.